This is a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay. It is Tuesday, June 28th, 2022, 3:30 PM. We're located at the Veterans Hall, 209 Surf Street, Morro Bay. This again is a special meeting and I'll ask the clerk to establish a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
Councilmember Barton, that's not here yet, and Mayor Heding.
Present, thank you. We do have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. Again, this is a special meeting. We have three items this afternoon. Approval of a community benefit lease agreement between the City of Morro Bay and the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Central Coast for teen center operations at 231 Atascadero Road. Item two is a review of a three-year agreement between the City of Morro Bay, Visit Morro Bay, and the World Triathlon Corporation Incorporated for the city to host an Ironman 70.3 mile swim, bike, and run event. And the third item is approval of the amendment number seven of the water reclamation facility design-build contract with Philonk, Black, and Veatch. And with that, I will go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for items on the special agenda only. Anybody wishing to speak on items one, two, or three, as I've outlined, come on up. Paul, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, Paul?
Is it on?
There you go. I think that's got it.
Um, afternoon, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to speak real quick to item number three on your agenda today. And in the reference recitals in amendment number seven on your page 63, they have discrepancies such as the dates and dollar amounts that don't jive. I'd like to point out some of the language referenced in those events mentioned in the agreement. In the second paragraph of amendment number seven, it says, whereas, quote, "Whereas, city and the design-build entity entered into an agreement as of October 23rd, 2018 to design and construct a new water reclamation facility which was approved by the City Council for a cost-plus with guaranteed not-to-exceed amount of $67,234,512," end quote. Looking back at that date, the City Council approved the original contract agreement with the staff report saying, quote, "Staff does not anticipate costs exceeding the maximum contract amount," end quote. It also said, quote, "Based on the WRF surcharges approved by the City Council via Resolution 7118, the city has a reserve for the overall WRF project in the amount of $9.5 million," end quote. Not only has that $9.5 million reserve been spent, but now with amendment number seven, an additional $11,463,483 will be expended just for the WRF plant site construction alone, what became of the guaranteed not-to-exceed amount. In the third paragraph, it says, "As of May 14th, 2019, to provide for design and construction of additional elements for the project and to increase the cost plus with guaranteed not-to-exceed amount for the construction project to $68,870,571 for those additional elements," amendment number one. The motion made in May 14th, 2019, the City Council, in the City Council regular meeting says, "Approve the potential change orders for the water reclamation facility, then increases the guarantee maximum price for the construction from $67,243,512 to $69,102,419." So none of these amounts agree with the amendment or what was originally motioned. The fourth paragraph, it makes reference to an April 21st, 2020 date. There's no record of that meeting date that I can find. Fifth paragraph, it makes reference to the May 20th, 2020, and there's no record of that date, which I can find either. The agreement amendment seems to be flawed and it should be returned for corrections. Besides that, construction has admittedly been plagued with delays, and since the contractors and the city's consultants have all indemnified the city, the city should not approve this new amendment. One last thing, can I add just one last?
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
One last thing is that the date mentioned on page 61 of the staff report shows the time-scheduled order completion date as February 20th, 2023. The TSO completion date is really February 28th, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Public comment is still open. Any member wishing to come forward? Welcome, Betty.
Good afternoon. I'll say amen to what the previous speaker said. I would add a couple of comments with regard to that item. One is, will the federal loan, the WFFIA, reimburse the city for any of the amendment number seven? Or are these costs above and beyond what they agreed to pay since they're overruns in a sense, that 125% for the design-build? And then also, I've been curious, there is a public works facility out there, not just a sewer plant, and I'm wondering, how's that being paid for? Is it being paid out of our sewer and water, or is that coming out of the public works budget, i.e. the general fund? And then I'd like to speak to item one and two as well. With regard to the Boys and Girls Club, I think a bit of apology because I have not seen this on the agenda before, but when I was looking through your goals, you've been talking about this for a little bit. But it's curious that it's not in the public dialogue, and I don't know how to help you get information out to the public better, but it's not well-known what's going on with your goals and stuff. I did send you an email and that had some, about five or six questions in there. I think my biggest one is going to be with regard to the skate park, to make sure that it's secure, that people will be able to use it, they don't have to be members of the Boys and Girl Club, that it's not going to be shut down unless you plan to move it somewhere. But that's pretty important to a number of students in Morro Bay. My other, second big question with regard to this item is, to what extent is it anticipated that the Boys and Girl Club will start facilitating all of the city's youth programs? Or are you going to maintain the Delmar Elementary School campus? Are you going to keep those facilities, or are you trying to phase those out? So those would be my two big questions. With regard to the second item, this is about the Ironman thing, and I understand that it's like dollar signs in everybody's eyes, but I also understand that it wreaks havoc on our infrastructure, at least what we've experienced in the past with regard to the bicycling events. So I would like to know, as a resident, what the city's going to do to give back to us? You know, not just to the businesses, that they get to make more money and pass on more taxes to you, but what will you do for us? You know, each council member? I want, and I gave you some options there, you know? Are you going to repair our streets, put more money towards that? Will you put out more trash and recycle receptacles that are decent-looking and not take them away, as has been happening? Will you commit to a certain percentage of revenue for increasing, paying for people's low-income people's bills, the sewer and water? Will you set aside money for a warming station or start, commit some money towards homelessness? So please address those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Public comment is still open. Any member of the public wishing to come forward? Please do so now. Welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Michael Wallwold, Executive Director of Visit Morro Bay. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Speaking to agenda item number two today with Ironman 70.3. Visit Morro Bay is extremely excited for the potential of a world-class event like Ironman to happen in Morro Bay, host city. Unlike Amgen, this will be a start and finish for Morro Bay. We do understand this is going to be a heavy lift for the city, but we're here to see this through and be as respectful to everybody as possible. An event like this will really showcase Morro Bay as the outdoor destination and the venture that we have into a world-class audience. Will bring thousands of participants and spectators over a four-day period for a one-day event. Also gives us the ability, Visit Morro Bay, to market the destination as an outdoor recreational area as we know it is throughout the year. We currently are doing that, but this gives a world-class feel to what we have. Through this process so far, we've been, I've been extremely impressed, as always, with City Manager Collins through his insights and the process that we've gone through. Look forward to your consideration. I thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Michael. Public comment is now open still. Any further members of the public wishing to come forward? Please do so now. I'll also ask Anthony, do we have any calls, callers that want to give public comment?
Hi, Mayor Heding. There's one person in public comments on Zoom. His name is Doug Smith.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I am a marathoner, and I wanted to speak about agenda item number two, the Ironman. Wanted to speak in favor of the Ironman Morro Bay Triathlon. Because I'm a distance runner, it's very special to me, and I'm also excited about the economic benefit to the private sector for strengthening the city's reputation as the destination for outdoor activities. I do, as said, have a few questions about it. We all pride ourselves on the biodiversity of the area. I want to know, is the City Council, including the environmental impact, determining the swimming portion of the course, especially regarding the estuary that we have? Also, the staff report, the staff report recommends use of economic development funds to cover residual costs, the annual cost of the $30,000 reported in the staff report from the Economic Development Fund. I want to know, the, it used, they also included economic impact details of the Ironman Indian Wells in La Quinta as a comparison. That included $128,081 in property taxes as their model for how they paid for it. And I was wondering, how is the EDF funded for, in Morro Bay? Are taxes for us going to go up at all? Or is this, I mean, and I also, I wanted to echo, how is this going to be? This is going to be a windfall on the order of millions of dollars for the city, and I want to know if this is, how this is going to be affecting us as the citizens in terms of improving our infrastructure in our qualifying life. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other callers for public comment? AGP?
There are no more public comments in the queue.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close public comment. And if those of you that are doing the presentations, if you could weave in some of the answers to the questions, and if perhaps you don't during your presentation, I'll try to remind you of some of the things that were asked. Paul, yours was rather detailed. I tried to take notes as best I could, but we may have to get back to you with regard to that on some of the items that you raised, so my apologies for that. Anyway, with that, we'll go ahead and move to item number one. This is approval of the community benefit lease agreement between the City of Morro Bay and the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Central Coast for teen center operations at 231 and Barcadero Road. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Collins and Mr. Carmichael. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Really excited to bring this forward, the Boys and Girls Club, the Central Coast area. And it's something we've been working on for a little while and really want to thank Kirk Carmichael and his office for pulling this together, which started out as a kind of an idea and has really sprung forward as something that will bring, we think, big benefit to the underserved youth in our community. And we'll be able to answer, I think, most of the questions were raised earlier in public comment. So with that, I will turn it over to Kirk Carmichael, Recreation Manager, who will go through a quick presentation, and then both of us will be available for questions. And I believe we will have representatives from the Boys Club on Zoom, so we may be able to call them. I know they didn't speak in public comment, but we'll be able to call them for questions as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, Council Mayor. Thank you very much for having me here today. And just a quick overview of what we're proposing at our teen center with regard to Boys and Girls Club. That, the agenda right up there is just a brief overview of what I'll be discussing so we can move on to the next slide, if we would. So this teen center has been owned and operated as a teen center since 2002. It was acquired by the city when the existing, let's see, the world's most difficult golf course, miniature golf course was the tenant there, or the owner of the property. So opened up in 2002. Roughly 2009, we added the skate park, which was originally housed on the, where the Coleman Park basketball court sits right now. And they found that the teen center seemed to be a more logical location for that due to a number of reasons, proximity to the teen center courts, but then also the element down there along the beach is not conducive for a skate park, so that's the reasons behind its relocation. What we've seen over the many years of operating our teen center is just, on average, it's been serving roughly 25 youth. Of course, it fluctuated from, you know, a low of, you know, maybe 10 up to, at sometimes maybe 50 at any given time. It was robust at certain times during that 20-year period with a teen action committee that we had in place where the teens would go around the community and provide volunteer work, assistance with some organizations, really skill-building and, you know, community outreach. That kind of faded away as it would come and go with, with really the students and then also our staff. You know, my office employs over 100 part-time staff, so they come and go, so it really depends on the, you know, the characters that we have playing with the teens at a certain time and leading these kids. So again, just kind of back and forth as far as participation and our staffing is concerned. Budget cuts and staff constraints. So budget cuts, we did see cuts, I think in 2009, where we were considering, you know, chopping the teen center entirely, removing it from the budget. Funding for that program was anywhere from $25,000 upwards to $80,000 depending on, you know, which year it was and the amount of activities that we did provide. Since the pandemic, we shuttered the building, which is a disappointment, I do understand, but we were not able to open the facility due to the pandemic. But then, as we were coming out of it, is when we started to engage in the conversations with the Boys and Girls Club and their interest in opening up a satellite or a program here in Morro Bay. So, thank you. Boys and Girls Club, yes, they're very busy up here in the Central Coast right now and most certainly in our area. They've opened up, let's see, a location at Los Socos Middle School just recently. They also opened something, a similar program up in the Laguna Middle School, both in San Luis Coastal District, one of those middle schools in San Luis and the other, of course, in Los Socos. And now they're reaching out here to Morro Bay, understanding that the Los Socos program would not serve many of our residents here in Morro Bay who do travel to Los Socos for their middle school. So that eliminates the need to have to bus kids back and forth to the different facilities. What I understand is they require a $50 annual membership, which I believe they have funding to offset the cost for those who can't afford it. And really what they're looking to do is serve the junior high, high school-age kids, we're calling teenagers. Many different programs that are much more specific than what the city was able to focus on and really rise to the occasion, I think. You know, they've got specific leadership and mentorship programs that is really inherent in the Boys and Girls Club program, and they are experts at that, and it just made logical sense for us to go ahead and move that program into our teen center, which was not being used at the time. And thank you. So the basics of the agreement, we're starting off with a five-year agreement, no cost to the Boys and Girls Club, really no cost to the city. They will go ahead and pick up all maintenance and utilities that are needed for their programming. They provide funding for all their supplies, trips that they take or what have you. They will maintain the grounds, but not the skate park. So to answer one of the public comments, the skate park will be open and available. It will remain as it is right now. It's unsupervised. It's open just like a tennis court in one of our parks, same kind of idea. So Boys and Girls Club will not maintain. The city will continue to maintain. As a matter of fact, we're looking at adding a different skate park element to replace one that we had to remove due to its failure not long ago. Let's see. Our intent is to work collaboratively with the Boys and Girls Club and not in competition. So part of our agreement is to work together to discuss, you know, what they're going to offer, what we're going to offer, how we can work together. We are looking at forming a, like a coalition, I guess, for lack of a better term to use, with the junior high and high school, along with our police department, recreation department, and others that are interested in working with teens. So we'll provide, or we'll get this coalition together to work, again, together collaboratively to provide the best service and programs that we can for this age group. And thank you. And we're looking for, recommending approval of a five-year lease agreement and the $10,000 from the city to support preparing the facility. And I could touch base on that briefly. One of the other questions we had was the $10,000 excluding staff time and what has already been spent on preparing the premises? Yes, the $10,000 is intended to be for supplies or whatnot. It does not address or cover staff time. And what has been done right now, I know our public works office and the maintenance team has been out there to get back into that property that sat fallow basically for so many, for two years. Seeing a little bit of destruction from, you know, people hanging around, just kids throwing rocks and whatnot, but, you know, we're replacing windows. We've cleaned up that backyard area at the back of the property, really opening it up again so it's much more visible to our police department. And they've done a heck of a job on the interior as well, just removing all the equipment and supplies that we had inside that building for so many years. It's been cleaned out and we're looking to get it ready for our new tenant. So the next steps from here would be to, for me to sit down again with Boys and Girls Club, to first of all discuss and then do a walkthrough with them as they'll explain to us what their intentions are, what funding they're going to need to either really do a full, huge remodel, add on to the property or what. So we'll be having those conversations as far as, you know, what they're looking to do with the property. And anything that they do to the property will have to be by approval of city. So that being said, I think I just want to make sure I touched on all the questions, and I'm sure Mr. Mayor, you'll call me out if I didn't catch them all.
There was one email asking about what the plans were for the larger area out back, if there were any, with regard to this agreement.
Yes, so that is under concept and discussion really with, the conceptual discussions with Boys and Girls Club, but their intention is using the back of the property, either, you know, put some turf out there to provide an area to play games, possibly, you know, come up with some creative ideas to use the area underneath that carport, garage-type-looking, I don't know what a better way to call it, but it's like a carport structure. But they had some great ideas already, but the intention is to allow them to move forward with their programming back there. Very, very difficult for us to consider a dual use of that property because of, number one, it's access reasons. We'd have to gain some kind of an easement to cross over Morro Bay High School property in order to get into that back area. It just doesn't seem like the best angle to take at this point in time. But again, their intentions are to develop and use the back of the property.
Great. Good to go?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, Kirk, thanks so much for the overview and the staff report. We really appreciate that, and I think we answered all the questions. Go ahead and ask if there are any questions for Kirk regarding this or for Scott and/or comments at this time? So I'll just open it up.
Mayor, do you want to see if Michael Boyer or Roberto wants to speak?
Sure.
I don't know if they're there, because I can't see the screen, but maybe check with AGP.
Sure, that'd be great, yeah. AGP, do we have anybody from the Boys and Girls Club that may want to add any comments?
Hello, yeah, this is Michael.
Please stand by or check in on that. Okay, Michael, please go ahead.
Great, thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us today. We're really excited about the opportunity. We're really excited to work with the teenagers of Morro Bay and also with the coalition of organizations that have interest in the teenagers of Morro Bay. We're excited about making, you know, making partnerships with the high school, the high school, as well as, you know, kind of integrating the students from loans also. So it's really, you know, this, we've been working on this for maybe about a little over a year, and, yeah, we're very excited about the opportunity. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. We'll put you on standby to see if there are any council questions of you specifically. Appreciate that. And with that, I'll open it up. I won't call on anybody, but if you have questions for Kirk or any comments at this time, looking to my left. Who's speaking?
This is Roberto from Boys and Girls Club.
Yes, Roberto.
I just want to say thank you to the council and to the City of Morro Bay's team. Kirk and his team have been really helpful in getting this to this point and making sure we're connecting. To answer one of the questions about the, about putting it out in the community, making sure that we know that this is happening, this is something, we actually had a coalition meeting with a bunch of the people from Morro Bay, people that are trying to move this, and they're really excited. We tabled those discussions until we got to this point, and we're going to regroup with that group in late July, early August, to talk about what we can do with more collaborative nature when working in Morro Bay. So just wanted to answer that question and just, to the team for the response that we've gotten from them.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much. I think Councilmember Ford, you had comments or question? Questions?
Thank you, Mayor Heding. I actually don't have that many questions. One question that did pop into my brain while you were speaking, Mr. Carmichael, is that the $10,000 in improvements, does that include, do we have to do any repair work to that carport, as we are calling it? Does anything on our behalf in the city, is that, is there anything that we have to do to help make that, make sure that's safe for the use for the Boys and Girls Club?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I know our maintenance team has been out to take a look at it. We haven't assessed it that close in order to make a determination whether or not we need to sink some of the dollars into that carport. And also, I know Boys and Girls Club was looking to send a team out to assess as well. We were talking about doing that over the last couple of months, but I look forward to them doing that soon as well, so, pardon me. I think through these assessments, we'll have some discovery, and those dollars are available for us to use if necessary.
Okay, thank you. And my other question could be for, you know, Mr. Boyer, or if anyone, you know, may be able to answer this. It's my question is regarding the name Boys and Girls Club, and I'm curious, I learned when I attended a, I think it's like, I'm trying to remember the name, it was like Cookies and Kids or something like that, when I was in Paso, and I was told that the older kids, we don't call it Boys and Girls Club, we don't label it that, the facility, that it would be called like the club. And I'm just curious if that's being taken into consideration to be a little bit more inviting to all the students and not labeling Boys and Girls for our high schoolers? And I'm just curious if that's been part of the discussion.
Yeah, yeah, this is Michael. Thank you so much. Really, there's a couple of different ways. We definitely brand our teen centers as the club, but we also will be starting a Keystone Lunchtime Club at the high school. So we call our high school leadership, Keystone. So at the high school, we'll, you know, weekly basis, we'll have a Keystone Club, and that, they'll meet at the high school, and then after school and other times, we meet at the teen center. So we really have two places where we'll interface with the teens. First, in the high school itself, and that'll be a great place to recruit new teens. First, in the high school itself, and that'll be a great place to recruit new teens, then tell them about our leadership programs and tell them about our vocational opportunities and job training and all of that. And then actually do those things at the teen center and other locations that are scheduled. So, definitely, we will not be branding this program as the Boys and Girls Club.
All right, that answers my question. Thank you so much. I don't have any further questions other than just a comment, and you said it's okay to do comments now?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm very excited that, you know, we're looking at something for this location that serves our youth. From the very beginning, when we were talking about the possibility of the Boys and Girls Club entering this facility, I, you know, was excited at the thought because it's really, truly a great service, especially to our students that need somewhere to go and somewhere that's safe. And so, I love that this is on our agenda today and I'm looking forward to working with Boys and Girls Club in the future, so.
Thank you for those questions and comments. Councilmember Addis?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank staff for working on this. It's been a long time in the making and I was, I had the privilege of attending a Boys and Girls event as well, and I was just so impressed with how much of the staff at the Boys and Girls Club had been Boys and Girls Club members. And so, it seems to me like an organization that's growing its own, and I love to see that in Morro Bay, that we can support our teens and support them with job skills as well. And I'm very happy to hear about the collaboration with starting something at the high school that could then bleed into or connect to what's happening at that property. And so, thank you for the time. I know that cleanup had to be a huge job as well. And I'm really, I think that's an ancillary benefit, is getting that property in a shape that we can all be proud of, so. And I look forward to supporting this.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Heller, comments or questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, if you're still there, the member of the public had a question about how the Boys and Girls Club is funded, and I wonder if you could speak to that for a minute and also the $50 annual fee? Explain that to people, if you're still there.
Yes, I am. Thank you so much. The way that our fee structure works is that we charge $50 a year for after school, for all of our after-school programming. We don't charge by the hour or anything like that. And $50 a year is the base price. If somebody needs financial assistance, we have those programs also. We don't turn anybody away. The reason we charge $50 a year is because people see more value in something they have to pay for. The percentage of our fee structure across our whole budget is under 2% of my budget is a fee structure. So, just to give you an idea of what we charge, is nowhere near the cost of what we provide.
Right, so the balance of the cost is provided by donations, I suppose, nationwide through the organization, or how does that work?
Yeah, we don't get any funding from national. All of our funding is, is really managed through our 501(c)(3) here in our region. And so, whether that is donor-based, I would say that we get about a third of our revenue from state, from state grant sources, about a third of our revenue from, from local or regional foundations, and then about a third of our revenue from various donors. So, that's kind of, if you look at the whole, the big picture.
Okay, thank you for that. And then...
Yeah, no problem.
Kirk, I've got a couple of questions for you. So, the skate park will still be available free to users, is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then the other question from the public was, does the city anticipate getting rid of any current offerings to students at Delmar?
No, we don't.
Okay, so that's not part of this picture at this point in time, right?
No, our Delmar focus is about kindergarten through fifth grade and Boys and Girls Club are looking more towards the junior high, so sixth grade on up, junior high and high school. We want to work collaboratively.
Okay. Those are my questions, and I must say, I fully support this happening. I think it's very exciting for the community and I think serving our teens and junior high school students after school is such a critical part of childcare, frankly. So, very happy, Michael, that you're here and looking forward to working with your organization.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Barton?
I too am very much in support of the program that you are proposing. I was a latchkey kid myself, and then my own children had after-school up till about, right around sixth grade, and they decided that they didn't want to do that anymore. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't grown up enough for them. And so, any way that we can provide helpful, healthful, educational opportunities for kids after school, I think is a great investment, so.
Good deal. Sounds like we have a winning proposal. Kirk, thank you so much for the long-term work that you've done on this and bringing this to us. We really appreciate that. And Michael, thank you for representing your organization so positively. I've had the opportunity to benchmark and get an understanding of the reputation of the club. It's stellar throughout the county. I'm proud that we have the opportunity to create a public-private partnership that will benefit not only the club, but will benefit the community greatly, especially right now post-COVID. I think there's a great need for kids to have support systems at all grade levels, and this is an opportunity to begin that and accelerate that here in this community. So, I look forward to having this move forward and will be happy to attend that wonderful day when we cut the ribbon and move forward with the project. So, with that, I'll go ahead and move approval of the community benefit lease agreement between the city of Morro Bay and the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Central Coast for teen center operations at 231 Atascadero Road and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Heading, second by Councilmember Heller on the staff recommendation. Any further comments? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great, thank you again. Michael, thank you both for being here today. Look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to agenda item number two. This is a review of a three-year agreement between the city of Morro Bay, Visit Morro Bay, and World Triathlon Corporation Incorporated for the city to host an Ironman 70.3-mile swim, bike, and run event. And Mr. Collins, turn it over to you, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm going to give you a brief presentation, as you received a lot of this information at the May, I forget what date it was, May, meeting where Ironman presented as well as the city on the proposal that we brought forward and to fruition into an actual legal agreement. So, without further ado, quick presentation and opportunity for both myself and Tim Brochus with Ironman to take any questions from council. So, what's being proposed here is a three-year agreement for the city to host a 70.3 Ironman event in May, beginning in 2023. This is a premier run bike swim event. It's held in five continents and several, several 50 to 100 countries. California has been a fruitful host of several Ironman events and currently in Oceanside and Santa Cruz, is close to our area. They're looking to expand their footprint, have been looking at Morro Bay and the Central Coast for quite some time, and they see an opportunity here to host up to 200, 2,500 participants and thousands of spectators to come alongside and with the waterfront as a focal point for the event. What's being proposed, and city legal team, I want to thank them and as well as the Ironman team for working expeditiously to come up to an agreement that I think both sides feel good about, which is a three-year agreement for the mid-May event. Ironman serves as the leader of the event, this is their event, but we're the host. Visit Morro Bay, you heard from Michael Wamboldt, there will cover the annual fee to Ironman and provide complimentary hotel rooms to the group, primarily to get the Ironman there to dress anything in the lead-up to the event and the day of, if there are any unforeseen events that take place. The city provides staff in the form of lifeguards, EMT, fire, and police, as well as supporting law enforcement agencies in the region. We provide the city parking lots and shuttling to other lots, as well as trash and some other miscellaneous activities. With regard to economic impact, the city costs are roughly $5,500, sorry, $55,000. We don't know if that's going to be exactly it. We won't know until we actually go through the event, but that's sort of based on what other cities have experienced recently. Ironman has agreed to cover up to $25,000 of those expenses. The anticipated economic impact will come through hotel stays, unlike the Amgem event, which is a kind of a one-and-done. There's a buildup to this event. Athletes start showing up the week of. The event's on a Saturday, folks start showing up on Monday to acclimate. They come with their family and their friends, so you have a plethora of hotel stays, they're spending money in restaurants and retail shops. They also do come months ahead of time to also learn the course as well. You know, we don't have an economic impact report that we can point to for Morro Bay. We won't know until we actually host the event, but based on our review of other economic impact analysis of other cities, you know, we can project anywhere from $200,000 to $300,000 in direct revenues to be generated. Important caveat there is we don't have the experience of actually hosting events, so this is a projection entirely. We're not putting that into our financial projections for next year, that starts on July 1st. So, this will be sort of a wait-and-see, but this is sort of our best guess at this point in time. We also will get the worldwide promotion of Morro Bay as an outdoor recreational.
Do we need to take a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. So, roll call. Courtney Scheppler, present. Stephen Peck?
Present.
Commissioner Alexander, present?
My word, present.
Very good. Okay, next up, do we have any public comment before we begin the agenda?
AGP, do we have any public comment on the line?
Thank you, Chair. We have no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. Okay, first on our agenda is the consent calendar, which includes approval of the minutes from the February 15th and April 28th meetings. February 15th was a regular meeting and April 28th was a special meeting. Is there any comment on the minutes?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Are.
Any opposed?
Since Santa Cruz, when I was overseeing events for the city, based on Commander Watkins' experience in Oceanside earlier this year, we believe we have the right team to work alongside Ironman to make this successful and, most importantly, safe for the participants in our community. So, we are recommending that the council authorize the city manager to execute a three-year agreement with Ironman Group and Visit Morro Bay. Like I said, Tim Brochus with Ironman, I believe, is on Zoom, so he can answer any questions you have and as well as myself and our city attorney, Michael Wamboldt, since this is a three-way agreement with Visit Morro Bay as well as Ironman and the city. So, with that, I will turn it over to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. And this was before us a month ago or so, and we've got the detailed information. One of the questions during public comment was, in terms of the economic impact to the city, the benefit derived, is there any specific plan on how those funds might be utilized? I mean, other than coming into the general fund and use for improvements in the future? It was a general question that somebody...
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. With anything new venture, we typically look at our policy. If it's new revenue that was not anticipated, we look at a two-year average and then use that as a benchmark for an ongoing basis to make budgetary decisions upon. Short of that, it's usually new revenues are pointed at one-time uses, either buffering reserve levels or applying to capital projects or equipment purchases. So, that's sort of our anticipation. We won't know what the economic impact is until after the event occurs, which is in May, and so we'll be able to do the analysis that summer of 2023. So, I think that'll give us a better vantage point for the next year. So, you know, but ultimately, it falls into the city's budget and, you know, council makes directions and makes decisions on what occurs with the city budget.
And then, one of the public comments, call-in, was any potential impacts on the bay for the swim portion of it? Were anything that is called out that you know of or any, anything in particular being done to make sure that we're not damaging the bay?
Yeah, I'm not aware of, you know, swimming activities would imperil the bay. We have plenty of recreational activities that occur in the bay. You know, they will provide some ancillary support in terms of lifeguards with boating equipment, but I don't see that above and beyond what's typically in our bay. It's a good question, but I don't foresee any issues, and I know that Tim probably speak to this, but they are very green in their approach to events.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate that, Scott, very much. And bring it back to council for comments or questions. I'll start down here. Councilmember Heller?
Thank you, Mayor.
Sir.
So, Scott, are the businesses on board for this? I know there's the potential revenue, but there's also the impact. How does the chamber feel and what do you think the business community thinks about this?
Well, I think, I think the business community is probably a little wary about this because they haven't had experience with it. And, you know, sometimes we have large events on the waterfront that close off the road, which this likely would do, that there may be impacts, especially on the event day, on their business. The good thing about Ironman is their approach is to work with the local vendors, to supply food to their, to their folks, to host events and those kind of things. So, I think they're looking at the long-term relationship and wanting to build partnerships and support for what they do, that they'll get in here early and start working with our business community, particularly those on the waterfront or those that would be impacted by the race design. So, I can't, I can't speak for the business community. I think, you know, the folks I've talked to at the chamber are excited about the opportunity. Obviously, Visit Morro Bay is supporting this. They're putting $50,000 or $60,000 into this event from their coffers, so they see the long-term benefit. So, I think there's a bit of education and outreach that'll need to be done on Ironman's behalf, and the city will also participate in that. So, I think it remains to be seen. It's a good question, yeah.
And the swim is definitely in the bay, not in the ocean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think, I think, I can say that definitively. Now, where they get in the water and get out, I can't say exactly right now.
And is it possible to earmark whatever we generate in revenues for something like the restroom at Coleman Park or something related to the bay? Is it possible for us to do that?
I think, you know, like I mentioned earlier, after year one, see what happens and, you know, if it's a successful event, they're going to come back year two and three, that we could look at it at that point to see how much additional revenue there is above what we projected for the budget. It's important to note that, you know, while they may fill up all the hotel rooms, you know, on the weekend, May is starting to get closer to our busy season, so there's going to be some, I don't know what the word is, but, you know, there'll be, already be some occupancy that you typically get in May. So, it's really what's above the normal amount that you would anticipate in mid-May is sort of where you, you get, you capture that additional revenue. So, there's a bit of finesse required in the analysis to determine how much additional revenue it's truly generating and not substituting. So, working with Michael Wamboldt, we'll figure that out. So, I think more in year two, we'd be able to maybe look at that.
Okay. And is this something that would typically be televised by ESPN or a major network, or is it not at that level?
It's not at the level of that kind of network TV, but it is on Facebook and all the other social media channels that they have, where frankly, a lot of people are turning to as an alternative to cable, to view things like this. So, I think they have a reach, a global reach of 6 million folks, and that's not to say all will be tuned in to Morro Bay, but it is a new race course, so I think there'll be a lot of initial interest to begin with, and hopefully that'll follow. But they, they have a vested interest to get a lot of eyes on the event, you know, because they want to draw participants for future years. So, it's great, and obviously, having the marketing arm with Visit Morro Bay will kind of extenuate that and push it out even further.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that. Very exciting event. As long as I don't have to participate, I'm all for it. And looking forward to it. As long as I don't have to participate, I'm all for it and looking forward to it. Thanks for being here, Michael. Thank you, Scott.
No problem.
Great. Councilmember Barton.
I'm excited too about the possible. Sorry. I'm excited about the possibilities for Moro Bay of this new event. But as I read through it, I had similar questions about people, where are people going to stay, you know, those kinds of things. And so I'm curious about would there, I don't know if there's any way to know this ahead of time, but would we be looking at the need for additional, like the short-term rentals? Would there be, I don't know, some sort of a okay for this weekend only, you know, that people could do that if they're not already registered to be a short-term rental? Or I'm just wondering, it seems like a lot of bodies that are going to need places to stay. So that's my question.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, that'd be a question for council. If council wanted to create some exemption, it probably creates more problems than it solves. But, I mean, it's a, it's a good question. I don't need to dismiss it. But I, I think, because you'd have to look at your ordinance, so that would take multiple swings to get that precise. But, but, you know, Michael's group will work really hard to fill up our hotel rooms and vacation rolls that are sanctioned and also RV camps that are allowed to maximize that. And also try to draw those athletes here, you know, months ahead of time to really take advantage and learn the course before they get out there. So that's really what our focus is going to be and also post-event, during event and post-event, trying to get people to visit Moro Bay. Right? That's, that goes above and beyond the net, hundred thousand, two-hundred thousand, three-hundred thousand, whatever it may be to, you know, today's revenue. It's looking long-term, you know.
Thank you.
Good. Hey, thank you, Michael, and thanks to Visit Moro Bay for their contribution. We really appreciate that. My question, Scott, was it seems to me, given the quantity or volume of folks that will be coming in, that there'll be spillover to other communities outside of Moro Bay? And what have we done with regard to asking Mr. Davison from Slocow if there's an opportunity for them to participate and contribute, given the positive financial impacts they might receive?
I'm probably going to defer to Michael on this since he's been having those conversations and see if he wants.
Michael will give it to you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, so we've spoken with Visit Slocow. Go through a process for sponsorship with Slocow. Events like this in Slocow's procedure need to touch more than one location in the county. So when we're looking at something like Amgen, it was starting in Moro Bay and maybe ending in Pismo Beach. This event's a little bit unique where it's starting and finishing here. I am speaking with Molly at the City of Moro Bay and then the unincorporated Discover Highway One, because there will be spillover to see what is possible with what that looks like, the event not necessarily touching another community or finishing, but how that spillover affects. So those talks are still in the works with Slocow and we're working diligently with them. So, thank you.
Good. Appreciate that. And then, you know, I was just thinking about when Ms. Winholz was giving her public comment, that, you know, some of the local concerns for individuals that live in the community, although tourism's our economic engine and this contributes to our general fund and improving that, and there are revenue benefits for us, there are impacts. And I'm thinking about garbage, you know, traffic, safety issues. And so I know that Ironman does this routinely and there's a plan for that. But just want to call it out as at least talking with some folks in the community, that that's always what the concern seems to be. You know, what's going to happen with traffic patterns? Are there going to be safety issues for pedestrians? And then, you know, who's going to pick up the garbage and those kinds of things? So just wanted to make sure I called it out and that we concentrated on a plan to address those items to maintain our community as much as possible, as normal as possible, I guess. So, and again, I'm very supportive of the item as well. I'll be supporting it. I think it's exciting, looked at. In fact, I attended the Hawaii, didn't participate in the Hawaiian Ironman, but that one's a hundred and forty point six, I think it is. But I think Jeff and I are going to look for the zero point seven zero three event whenever that comes to Moro Bay. Councilmember Addis, any comments or questions?
No, no questions. I'm super excited though. I think this is a great opportunity. So thank you, Michael, for the work you've done on that and staff for the work. And I do think there's a lot to be determined, but I also think it's a true opportunity for our city, and I'm excited for us to take advantage of this.
Great. Councilmember Ford, comments or questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Heding. I do have a question. It's kind of piggybacking off of Councilmember Heller's question regarding businesses. And I guess I'm looking for a little bit more information, maybe if we have, I don't know if we have someone on Zoom representing Ironman here today, or maybe someone else can answer this. But my, you know, I want to start with, I am actually quite supportive of this event. I'm really excited for it to come. But as a business owner, I also have to recognize the concern for those businesses that will be completely shut down that day, that might have, you know, stand-up paddleboard businesses and, you know, kayaks and that kind of thing that can't use the bay on a Saturday. And so it's not written anywhere where I could see in the agreement. So I'm just curious how we can get some sort of guarantee from either Ironman or from our city or who is responsible for working with those businesses and making sure that they're, that we're doing whatever it is that we can to use them in this process, use their services, you know? And it was mentioned in that last meeting by the gentleman who gave the presentation that in the past, they've done things like rented the boards out and used them for the event from those businesses that are being shut down essentially. So I'm just curious if we've gotten any more detailed information on how that process looks.
Yeah, I think a lot of it will depend on the race course design, which is very much in flux right now. But if Tim Brochus is available, AGP, are they on Zoom?
Yeah, I am here. Thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, Timmy.
Great question, and I appreciate everybody reviewing the contract and having me on again this month. To answer, kind of long story short, to answer your question is, you know, we try to utilize any local businesses that we can, not only, you know, a stand-up paddleboard or kayak rental for our swim safety assets, but also local caterers for our post-race food and such. For us, Scott had mentioned, you know, it depends really on the race course design when it comes to something specific like stand-up paddleboards and kayak rentals. For other, for other areas, when we do work with these groups in other communities, we do sometimes use those. And if we affect the business where they have to shut down all day. Now, the benefit is if this is one day and we're bringing in thousands of people throughout the week, we hope that those, the tourists that are coming in are utilizing the businesses. So it's kind of a give and take of outweighing the pros and cons, really. Again, you know, kind of putting this into a guarantee or into a contract is kind of nitty-gritty for us when, again, talking about like post-race food, we always use a local caterer, but we've never really put that into an agreement. Does that make sense? I hope, I hope I was able to clarify that a little bit.
I think so. I'm just, I guess I'm curious about that process. So once you have the course set, it sounds like you assess those businesses that are directly affected or most affected, and then that's taken into consideration as far as, you know, what it is that you can, what you can do to help that business as far as using their services. And if you can't use their services, it sounds like you're hoping that they get business otherwise on other days? Is that, am I summarizing that correctly? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah, exactly. I think the reference I had spoken about before was in Boulder Reservoir. We actually, we shut down the reservoir for the day and the stand-up paddleboard owner cannot have anybody come the entire time, the entire length of the period of from open to close of the reservoir. So we utilize his equipment when our race day is occurring.
Okay. All right. Well, it sounds like Ironman seventy point three is willing to, you know, work with our businesses. And I hope to see that because that really, at this point, is one of my main concerns. Otherwise, I think all the benefits are amazing that come from an event like this for Moro Bay. So I'm excited to see it move forward. I had a long laundry list of questions in our last meeting and those were all answered. So, yeah, I feel good about it. So thank you.
Good questions. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion if there's anybody that would like to.
I'll move to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve by Councilmember Addis.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Ford. By way of just adding my comment, thanks for the partnership again with Visit Moro Bay. And you can give my regards to Chuck and maybe tell him the mayor suggested it would be great for them to participate. And I appreciate staff's willingness to address the issues that have been raised. And thank you for bringing up the business community. I think that's critical. There's always a concern about loss of business sometimes or gain in business, but also potential losses on areas that are impacted. And then lastly, just to reiterate the concerns about traffic, safety through fares and then, you know, garbage and those kinds of things. I know you'll be looking at that and that will be addressed with regard to it. Thanks for all your work on that. Tim, thank you for being here again. We look forward to it. Exciting events. And I don't think I'll be in shape by that time, but we'll watch maybe other members of our staff participate. I'm challenging Mr. Collins at this time to be a participant. With that, if there aren't any other questions or comments, we'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Great. Thanks, Tim. Have a great day. That brings us to item number three. This is approval of amendment number seven to the water reclamation facility design-build contract with Philan, Black and Veatch and Mr. Qualick and Mr. Amico, or both, or one.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
I'll just introduce Mr. Amico. Mr. Amico is our program manager for the entire Wharf project. The item that you have before you today is consideration of an amendment to the design-build contract the city has with Philan, Splock and Veatch. And the purpose of that amendment is to address a couple of issues related to some delays that are impacting the design-build contractor because of delays that we are seeing on the conveyance pipeline, some contractor-associated delays as well as delays associated with shippo. And so Mr. Amico is going to go through the points of the amendment and any other considerations. I know there have been some last-minute discussions that Mr. Amico can review. So take it away, Paul.
Welcome, Paul.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers and community members. Thanks again for allowing me the time to present this item. As Director Qualick said, I'm Paul Amico. I'm the program manager for the Wharf. So contract amendment number seven. We've been talking over the last several months, in discussions both with P-WAB and with the council and through the budget process, that we've known for quite a while now that the pipelines were not going to be ready when Philan, Splock and Veatch wanted to receive wastewater to the water reclamation facility so that they can start the biological process. So the contract, the most recent amended agreement or the most recent amendment, it put the substantial completion date, meaning the date that the plant would be treating sewage and treating wastewater and meeting the permit. That substantial completion date was early July, July 12th, I believe the date was. With final completion, meaning, I always say, you know, painting baseboards and replacing dented door frames, things like that, that just wrapping up the plant, but it is substantially complete, meaning the city then would take care of custody and control of the plant from that point forward. So the July 12th date, we knew was going to come and go without having the pipelines ready. But we really needed the sewage to be there a little bit earlier than that. So we knew we needed to extend those dates. Began discussions with Philan, Splock and Veatch back in February. And through those discussions, if you want to get into the details of what the initial ask from Philan, Splock and Veatch was, I can cover that. But it was, it was quite a long list of items. So in consultation with the city attorney's office, we began discussions with Philan, Splock and Veatch back and forth. Our special counsel, Council Joe Penone, through work with the project team and the city attorney's office, felt that the design-build agreement provided for this situation, that we didn't need to add a bunch of additional provisions to the agreement that would cover a whole variety of issues. We didn't need to modify that agreement, that this is simply a contract extension and a change order for the additional costs that FPV would incur through no fault of their own. And that's absolutely fair. So through that process, they came back and asked for just a couple of additional items. And that's what's included in the amendment that's before you tonight. So the first thing we did was cleaned up the dates. So we provided them adequate time to start up the plant after we get wastewater to the plant. Our current projection for the pipeline project is those pipelines would be ready to send wastewater to the plant by October 3rd. So what that, what we had to do then was to move the substantial completion date with giving them adequate time to get the biological process stable and to start treating wastewater and then to also start up the purified water facility, the facility, reverse osmosis facility that makes the purified water for injection in the ground. So that's approximately three months. It was estimated to be three months original schedule. It's still three months. And then final completion always has been approximately two months after substantial completion. So we just simply moved those dates. So that's now January 10th or January 20th. I don't remember the date off the top of my head. It's in the amendment. It's January and March. So then the three or the four major items that we had come to agreement on that would be addressed by this amendment was the first one was the guarantee. What, within the DB agreement, Philan, Splock and Veatch guarantees that the facility remain free of defects in workmanship and materials for a period of one year. The plant at this moment in time is actually being operated in clean water circulation mode. So we felt it was pretty fair, but that by the original substantial completion date of July 12th, because the city is operating this equipment, that that guarantee would kick in at that time. Manufacturers warranty on certain pieces of equipment, like for instance, the membranes, which were pretty expensive, pretty specialized pieces of equipment, those warranties would not kick in until that equipment is installed. Through consultation with operations staff, they were good with this. They were good with the guarantee because we're going to see a lot of these defects now anyway as we're operating the plant. And then the manufacturers, the relationship really is between the city and the manufacturer after Philan, Splock and Veatch is gone. And then, and that relationship would stay. So any warranty claims would be handled by the city at that point anyway. So we didn't figure that this was a big concession on the city's part, so we agreed to that. Builders risk, they have already extended it once. They didn't know if it was going to be commercially available. We did ask them to check to see whether it was commercially available. They continue to contend that it may not be and that until they actually sit down and ink a deal, that may be one area where they felt they were a little exposed. So we did negotiate a term around insurance related to that and that the city would pay for that insurance extension and should it become, should it be commercially available. And then retainedage release. So when we pay contractors, we withhold five percent of the value of the work in any given pay application for what we call retainage. And what that retainage does is just means that they can't walk away and they can't, if there are subcontractors or other people that file claims against them, that the city isn't then exposed for anything on the hook. And also keeps the contractor around until the end, as they can finish the job, so they get five percent of their money. It's fair that we would release retainage at this time for work completed, again, because city staff is out operating the plant with Black and Veatch. They're not operating it solely, but with Black and Veatch. So it was fair that on completed work, we would release some of that retainage now. There is still remaining value in the contract. So one of the questions was about a hundred and twenty-five percent of remaining value. That was related to retainage. So what it says is, it says that the city can then withhold, they wouldn't, the city, we wouldn't release retainage in excess of a hundred and twenty-five percent of the value, the remaining value of the contract. So it's legal language and it's, and it's doubles in the detail sort of working out. But in concept, we're going to release retainage for them for work completed. They have about eleven million dollars of outstanding invoices at this point in time. So there's about, they claim about eleven million dollars worth of work remaining. So we will be holding retainage on future pay applications. So that doesn't, we didn't give up our right to hold future, withhold future retainage, just going to pay them what they have, what we're holding right now. The last component of the agreement was that we would not put these costs against the guaranteed maximum price. Again, through no fault of Philan, Splock and Veatch, the guaranteed maximum price would not go up for the Wharf itself. So the delay cost, we will hold that outside of the guaranteed maximum price and it would be paid as a delay cost. And it would not impact their ability to deliver the shared savings that is a component of the design-build agreement. So just wanted to open it up for discussion. So, just wanted to open it up for discussion, but a few key points before we get into that. The first one is, we will remit the regulatory compliance deadline required by the state. Substantial completion in, by getting sewage to the plant in October, we have three months to start up, we still, we're still ahead of that TSO date, so as we said already, starting the guarantee and releasing retainedage, that's a fair, that was a fair concession on our part to be able to do that, because that, for instance, the retainedage is real, it's about $3 million that we're currently holding of theirs. It's reasonable for us to extend that insurance, they have to ensure the facility against loss and damage, so that is also reasonable. And so consequently, in the recommendation that we are making, we're also asking council at this time, unlike other change orders where we come to you in some cases and say, this change order is for a future piece of work, it costs this much, these change orders, we needed to, we need to approve those in order to keep the project moving, we are asking council to allow us to access the $2 million budget that we, $2 million worth of the budget in order to then negotiate this claim. So, I've got some nuanced points that we've got to kind of talk about here as we're doing the recommendation. So, we recommend that council authorize the city manager to execute this amendment number seven. One point that I would like to make, and I guess I'll ask City Manager Collins if he would like to do this, or if he'd like me to do it, which is, as we've gotten through this agreement with Philan, Black, and Veatch, they have not been satisfied with the actual wording of many of these, the terms of the agreement, the amendment, specifically related to retainedage release was one of them, and then the other one was related to cost. So, retainedage release, there's a provision in the contract that says, if we're not paying the bills, if we're not, we're not giving them the money or releasing retainedage when we say we're going to, or they think they're entitled to, then we would pay interest on that money. They've disputed that all along, that what we've pointed to in the DB agreement doesn't allow them to get the retainedage release, they wanted more specificity around that, and then they also wanted more specificity around their ability to collect additional interest on that. City Attorney's Office did not agree with what they were, with what Philan, Black, and Veatch was digging in on, and so we simply kept including the language that we had from the DB agreement with slight modification. So, the second term of this agreement that they didn't necessarily agree with is they wanted to hard code the $2 million into the amendment, and the interpretation that we had from the language that we traded was that they believed they were entitled to $2 million, as opposed to basing that $2 million on an approved O&amp;M plan for the interim period where we're going to be circulating water through the plant and when we actually get them wastewater. During the negotiation, I saw from the project team whether that, that plan had been approved by city staff, and it turns out that had not been approved by city staff, that it is a submittal now in Procore, which is the document management system that we use, and that we have not reached agreement on what that delay period looks like. So, we inserted a term in the agreement that said that by July 12th, which was the original substantial completion date, that we'd agree on the maintenance plan, and that we would agree on a detailed estimate and a budget for what those delay costs were, so that we as a project team can closely manage that in combination with that estimate, so that we can hold the line on the cost for the delay. So, FPV has indicated to us that they will not sign this agreement, or they are unlikely to sign the agreement based on the approval, and so we've directed them in accordance with the DB agreement, if they don't agree with it, they can write us a letter back specifically citing why they wouldn't, and that we would then write them a letter back directing them to, that we will do these things that we agreed we would do, release retainedage, cover insurance, so on and so forth, and that they need to finish the work once we get them wastewater. So, there would be an additional authorization from the council that should they choose not to sign the agreement that you approved tonight, if you approve it, that you would authorize the city manager to write that letter back to them, reiterating the points of the agreement and directing them to finish the work. So, with that, we recommend that city council receive our staff presentation and authorize the city manager to execute this amendment to the design-build contract with Philan, Black, and Veatch.
Anything to add, Mr. Qualick? Mr. Collins? No? Okay, thank you, Paul, for that. I'll open it up for questions, and let's see, where did I go last time? I'll start in the middle, Councilmember Barton, any questions or comments?
I'm glad to have you here, Paul, to help us with this, I read this over a number of times and have various things underlined and notes written. This is a tough thing to get your mind around, and so, anyway, I'm glad that you're here to help explain it.
I hope, I hope I can do it okay.
It was, the two that got me were number five and number eight, those lengthy explanations, it just was, it was hard to wrap your mind around.
The contract?
At least for me. So, those are on page two and three, yeah, those two paragraphs. And now that you've explained about the, the interest and the payment of that, it's starting to make more sense in number eight, I think is where that came into play.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So, our colleague from the city attorney's office, he made reference to public contract code that provides for the situation where we wouldn't pay the bills, right?
Yeah.
Neither one of the, what we were debating with Philan, Black, and Veatch didn't necessarily apply here, that was not our interpretation of what this is for. We've agreed we were going to release the retainedage, we've, you know, we've, and so, we don't think that what they've put back in front of us applies, and that, so we just had a disagreement about that.
Right, and that's, that's good to know, because that's, that's where we are, and, yeah, from your explanation, it makes more sense now that we're not going to just jump, jump to do that.
Right. Mr. Panoni had to explain it several times to me, so I, I'm hoping I explain it well, so.
Yeah, thank you.
You're good? Okay, sure. Councilmember Heller, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So, if I understand this correctly, the folks who are building the plant will be done per the schedule, but the piping contractor will not be done, and the builder of the plant is asking for $2 million for being delayed in the operation, getting the plant operating, is that right?
That's correct.
So, all of the $2 million is largely delays that occur during the installation of the piping, is that right?
That's correct.
Is that fair to say?
Mm-hmm.
And some of those were missteps or mistakes made by Anvil Construction, the piping contractor, and some of those were attributed to public agencies, but it amounts to about a six-month delay, is that roughly what we're looking at here? There are kind of two issues here in my mind, I have two questions, one is, we've heard a lot of stories from the beginning about the struggles of the piping contractor, various mistakes they made, pipes that they've broken, and staffing problems, there are a number of issues, so what percentage do you think of that $2 million is really the responsibility of delays that Anvil created by their, by their problems?
Councilmember Heller, if I could just step in?
Yeah.
I don't know if it would be prudent for the city's project manager to publicly on the record give out an estimate for possible delay costs that are attributable to Anvil until we've done a thorough review and basically the project's more farther along, I don't want to prejudice the city's ability to recover costs down the road.
Okay, I'm fine with that. The other question I have is, the, the agency delays that you referenced, the archaeological work that's done as part of the Native American work that has to be done, as well as requirements of the lender, which apparently were not anticipated, you know, we don't have control over public agencies or lenders, what is in the contract with respect to what constitutes a delay, because the lender has certain requirements that have to be met, that the contractor wasn't aware of, or that SHIPO has requirements that have to be met, that the contractor maybe had no experience with? How does the contract protect the owner from claims like this? And how do you assess that in fact, it is something that we, the owner should be paying for?
That's a two, that's a two-part question, one, one's a legal question, and then the other one is the, is the cost, right? Like, how did we, how did we understand that we were in a delay situation?
Right.
Is that fair to?
Exactly right, yes.
So, the, I can take the one about the delay, the delay and how we knew, so the first, the first component of that was, you know, the programmatic agreement between EPA and the State Historic Reservation Office, who we call SHIPO, stipulated a program whereby we would assess the presence of cultural resources and then put together a mitigation plan for how that was done. In order to meet the date from the time schedule order, the program team authorized Anvil builders to move forward with their project on, on schedule at that time, and then once, once those, once our archaeologist's report was assessed by SHIPO, they put a full ground stop on the work, early on in the project. And if you recall, the city council approved a 41, or 43-day extension to Anvil's contract because of that, and there was about a $443,000 impact that we had, we had determined through that delay. So, that was the first delay, then that released a, most of the project to be constructed. There was a piece of the project roughly just south of the pipe bridge that Anvil's building in Lila Kaiser Park over Moore Creek, all the way to the corner of Highway 1 and Atascadero Road. That component was not released for construction until recently, until early this year as a matter of fact. We spent almost a year in discussions with EPA and SHIPO on that issue, and I, to characterize it, a year of discussions is probably not entirely accurate, since there was a lot of people going away and us not hearing much, trying to follow up, trying to get concurrence, trying to get agreement. Through that process, we were able to redesign the project north of Moore Creek to Atascadero Road, to get it out of those cultural resources, but we couldn't eliminate any potential impact to those cultural resources for the pipe bridge construction. So, it wasn't until, I think it was February this year, that Anvil was actually authorized to go construct those pipelines and that pipe bridge, and it was under the direction of a archaeologist, our archaeologist, from Far Western. So, those, it was just simply a time delay before they could actually start that work in accordance with the schedule that they had submitted us initially, but then it was also an impact to them because that excavation work had to proceed very, very slowly because of the archaeological clearance, and it was a lot of back and forth between our archaeologist, archaeologist and SHIPO in order to do that. So, they were impacted, and right now, what they're doing is they're preparing a time impact analysis to say, here's what it would have taken us originally to do this, and here's what it actually took us to do this, and therefore, it's X amount of time and X amount of dollars to be able to, for them to substantiate how they were actually impacted on that. So, at the same time, they were delaying themselves in pump station construction, and so those two delays were concurrent, and then they picked up on the pump station because they could. They couldn't pick up on the pipe bridge and that other stuff, because that was really being controlled by SHIPO and the requirements of the WFIIA loan agreement. So, we will receive their time impact analysis, and we will assess it, and what they believe the impact is, and we'll negotiate that around all the construction that they were delayed on until about February this year.
Okay, is it, is it ever done in such a way that the design team meets with, with SHIPO and talks about these things before the contract is awarded for the work?
This, it's, it's hard to, there's nothing very typical about this project, that, I mean, that would be my, the first thing I would say about this, is this project is not typical. For us to be constructing a project like this in this location, in one of the most culturally and environmentally sensitive areas of the state, and to take funding from a brand-new loan program from EPA, we were pushed into a situation that our design team and archaeologists had not necessarily, and even the agencies, the funding agencies and the state agencies had not been in before. So, we really had no ability to project the, what we thought we were going to impact in terms of cultural resources until the pipeline project had been progressed to about 90%, and that's when, because inches and feet matter in archaeology, so we needed to know with a very high level of certainty where the pipelines were going to go, both in, in the, in the world and then deep, depth, so that we could determine, were there potential cultural resources that were going to be impacted? So, could we have done it differently? Absolutely, but we have a time schedule order that we had to meet, there were a lot of permitting hurdles for this, there was a discussion with two landowners, if you recall, to build the pipelines, that also delayed the project from a design perspective. So, there were many, many challenges around this project that, that we had to overcome, so.
Okay, and then with respect to WFIIA, I've heard that when you get federal money, there are a lot of requirements that come along with that.
Mm-hmm.
Have you, have you worked on a project with federal financing before and dealt with these issues?
Not the WFIIA program, no, most of the projects that I've worked on in my career have been state revolving fund projects that do have some federal funding, but generally the, those are state requirements, and the state requirements govern the projects I've worked on. This is the first WFIIA project I've worked on.
So, there were some costs or delays that were associated with working with WFIIA apparently, as well, is that true?
That is true, that, all of the cultural resource requirements that we had, both the delay caused by the, the ground stop, meaning no ground disturbing activities, and also not, us not being able to get into the area between Moore Creek and Highway 1 and Atascadero Road ramps, those were all driven by the programmatic agreement between EPA and the state regarding environmental, you know, environmental clearance activities associated with taking that federal funding.
Okay, and then Chris, over to you, as a city attorney, were there things in the contracts that could have protected the city from these kinds of issues with respect to agencies that we have no control over? Can you, can you speak to that?
Sure, so, in regards to government agencies that have authority over the city, we don't have much recourse in asking them to follow their own schedules when they don't, I mean, bottom line, if the federal government is taking 30, 60, 90 days longer than they said they were going to take, there really isn't a whole lot of recourse that the city has, unless we were going to pursue some sort of adversarial relationship, litigation with the federal government, which it really just, there isn't really an option there. Unfortunately, when the EPA and the Federal Fish and Wildlife informed us that they were going to take longer than they're supposed to, we had to just wait for them to make their decision. It's the federal government, I don't, I don't know what else there is to say about those delays, it's not an uncommon story unfortunately in our country.
Okay, then back to the $2 million, and there's a statement in the staff report that there'll be no rate increases if we make this, if we approve this amendment, my concern is, we're going to be looking at a new budget at our next meeting that, that raises the total program cost from 145 million, its current value to 160 million. Not sure quite how to say this, but I'll just, I'll just say it, obviously, what we're concerned about is the 160 real, and do we have the financing in place to support a $160 million project? So, I guess my question is, this $2 million might not lead to a rate increase, but will the 160 million lead to a rate increase? So, it's kind of like, there's no rate increase until all of a sudden, there is. So, I'm kind of uncomfortable with, with, with that statement that there'll be no rate increase associated with this change, although it's certainly true. Those are my, those are my questions, thanks.
Hey, thanks, Councilmember Heller. So, Paul, I just, I want to maybe give my own summary and concern, and I don't want to be repetitive, but I want to try to make it, at least simplify it for myself. There were delays that resulted in us not being able to meet the deadline or schedule for Philan, Black, and Veatch, in terms of, they were basically done with the project, the WRF facility, they were ready to connect to the pipeline, but the pipeline wasn't ready to be connected to. That results in them having to have resources that continue to be deployed on-site until such time as we're ready to connect and they finish that. That's the $2 million increase in cost that they're asking for. That's the $2 million increase in cost that they're asking for. So, there was a guaranteed maximum price. However, this additional $2 million is quote-unquote "a change order," or, right, so it's a change order. And the delays that caused the increase in price, I'm looking at threefold. One, regulatory, primarily to do with the Environmental Protection Agency WFIya loan, which has federal requirements through SHPO that caused delays that were beyond literally anybody's control, and, and if we hadn't done what they said, basically, with regard to what their requirements were, we would have lost WFIya funding, which was at 0.9 percent and saved us, obviously, you know, millions of dollars. Secondarily, there are potentially, and this is, and I know Chris is going to look at me, but there are potentially performance issues with Anvil. I won't go any further. Those will be vetted in a closed session, and I'll stop there. Is that correct, Chris?
When the issue is ready for the city to pursue, then I believe we'll have a closed session and confidential discussion.
The potential would be to look for a remedy there to offset this cost, okay?
Yes.
And then, thank you, and I know, I need to stop there because it's a closed session item. And lastly, you mentioned the landowner issue, which I'm, I'm just gonna, you know, it's something I know that may be an elephant in the room, but there were significant delays because of Vistra and not being able to have access to the site. And that caused the inability to move that pipeline forward until we could get access to the property, which is, which was an extensive process that many people worked on, and we finally got access, and that basically allowed us to continue. So, those three issues lead to Philonk, Black and Veatch not being able to be done and out of here. That's a $2 million hit. That's part of the budget that we'll be looking at in the next meeting, but this portion of it, the $2 million, will not have an impact on rates, and one of the questions that was asked, where will the funding come from? Will it be part of SRF or WFIya funding? And I don't know if we have an answer to that, but I guess, is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Couple, just one, I don't know, I don't want to say it's a nuanced point or whatever, it's up to $2 million.
Up to $2 million.
The commitment that we have as a project team in the amendment is that by July 12th, we will agree on the maintenance plan, and we will agree on a budget that we can manage it to. My aim is to bring that to under, well under $2 million.
Okay. So, at the max, the maximum exposure is this, and that's what you're asking for tonight?
Should, yes.
Just wanted to clarify that, and, and my term for myself, dummy it down so that I understand it, and maybe the public can understand the issues that are very complex that, that have resulted in, in this ask for this evening. I don't have any further questions. I will be supporting the amendment, because if we don't, the project stops. I'm not happy with the fact that there's an increase, but the complexities of the delay that I've outlined, we are working on some remedies, I know, and there are some potential cost savings that may come forward as a result of that, and that's all I can say, and I see Chris looking at me, so I'll stop. Thank you. Councilmember Addis, sorry.
I think I know the answer. Well, I know, I know the answer, but could you just restate again? Can we just sort of like raise rates, just as a surprise?
No. Water and sewer goes through a Prop 218 process with a 45-day noticing period where community members, and it protests where upwards of 50 percent plus one of the, of the units would have to protest for the rates not to go into effect, or for council to approve rate increases, so it's a very extensive process.
Okay, and I'll just, I'll keep my comment short. I just, I really want us to be done. I know I've said this before, but I think our best way out of this situation is to get it finished, and for that reason, I'll be supporting this. Of course, none of us are happy with the cost increase. I think that's, should be abundantly clear to everyone. I'm sure it's abundantly clear to you, Paul, as well, and I don't feel like I need to beat you up on that, but I am glad that you are, you know, working on this, that you're diligent, that we're talking about how, you know, how might we address some of these delays with what power we may have in the future, and I think that's incredibly important to our community and as part of this discussion. But I remain, my views remain that we have to move this project forward, we have to move our community forward, get on to concentrating on other things, and spending staff time, community dollars, and council effort on other things in our community. So, I'll be very glad to see this move forward, even though I'm frustrated with what it's cost us so far, both financially, but also I just think emotionally and tearing our community apart in a lot of ways, so I'm, I'm anxious to move past this.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Councilmember Ford, any questions, comments?
I guess my only question really boils down to, and it's regarding your statement, Mayor, that if we were to vote no, that this project just stops, is that, is that the result of a no vote on this item? I mean, like, what, what are the consequences if we were to say no tonight?
The, I'll, I'll look to Chris to back me up on this, but the consequences really are that then FBV would be past their, their substantial completion date. What that would mean is the city could seek remedy from them. There are liquidated damages in the contract for them missing that. That, that would not go very far, because we've, we've acknowledged that this is a delay that is not caused by the fault of either party, really, and so, they would be out of compliance with their schedule if, by a no vote.
If, if this amendment wasn't approved, then we would need to at least have the second action being recommended, that city manager authorizes or orders FBV to proceed with different substantial and final completion dates, and to make changes pursuant to those dates under the contract we have existing with them. This current contract we have with them, they have agreed to finish this project. We are now facing basically a change order. That's what's going on tonight. This is a change order. We don't have tonight, you know, the, the dollars and cents in the change order. We're looking at extending the dates, and so, if we didn't approve this amendment, and as Mr. Mika pointed out, they haven't signed it yet, so, you know, we do need action, though, to extend the dates, and once that's done, the contract covers it, and they, and they have to finish the work. If they didn't, it'd be a material breach.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to, forgive me for making one last point, and I just want to make sure that the $2 million that we've currently estimated presumes that the seed sludge date, the date that we send wastewater to the plant is October 3rd. If there is a disaster on the pipeline project, and we are working very, very closely with Anvil on that schedule, and we've got, we've got a good plan, and we've got a very good recovery schedule with them, but if there is a disaster on the pipelines, something happens, and we miss that date because of that, then there would be an increased cost, because a lot of this is due to time, insurance extension, et cetera, et cetera. So, we will be given updates, obviously. We stay in close contact with staff as we do this, and once we get the budget negotiated with them and the maintenance plan, we will have a firmer budget, but right now, $2 million is what they've given us. I don't have much more detail beyond that, because we haven't agreed on the actual maintenance plan.
Okay. All right. I'll go, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One more comment.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, with all due respect, I don't think you're correct, Mayor, that the, that the job will stop. The dates are the issue, they can be issued a construction directive to proceed. I'm personally not comfortable approving a change order based on an estimate of what it might be. Change orders typically come with specific amounts after they've been negotiated, then they come to the owner for approval. So, I would suggest that, that we move to extend the dates, give them a construction directive, and then bring back a change order when, when it's been fully negotiated.
Okay, thanks, and thank you for that clarification. Perhaps not stopping the project, but incurring increased costs would, would be my additional comment. So, with that, I've...
It won't do that.
Pardon me?
Stop, it's not going to stop the project, and it won't increase the costs. It'll save the city costs to put them in a position where the owner says, no, we don't approve this. It puts our team in a stronger position to negotiate that $2 million down to a more reasonable number, and typically, change orders come to the owner after they've been negotiated and the number is firm.
Yeah.
That's my point.
Appreciate that, and the staff has worked diligently to, to bring this forward as a recommendation, and I'll go ahead.
Yes, Chris. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that this amendment is not approving any extra money tonight.
Right.
This amendment is for time, and then there's some other details in it as well, and of course, that's what council is being asked to consider tonight.
Yeah. Okay. I will go ahead and move that we authorize the city manager to execute amendment number seven to the design build contract with Philonk, Black, Black and Veatch.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mayor Heading, second by Councilmember Ford for the staff recommendation. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you. That ends the special meeting. We'll be back at approximately 20 minutes, at 5:30 for the regular city council meeting. Thank you.